Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to this February 28th meeting of the City Council. Hereby call this meeting to order. Would you all please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
And would the clerk please call roll?
McHale.
Here.
Bud Matts.
Present.
O'Brien.
Here.
Beniziano.
Here.
Basassi.
Here.
Reyes.
Here.
Suneika.
Here.
With seven present and no absences, there is a quorum this evening. Therefore, members of the audience are reminded that these proceedings are being recorded for current and future broadcasts over the city's cable television channel as well as other media outlets. Looks like the first order of business this evening is to approve minutes from a previous meeting, and that previous meeting is the February 14th, 2023 City Council meeting. Is there a motion to approve this set of minutes?
Some of them.
Thank you, Alderman Suneika. Second, thank you, Alderman O'Brien for the second. Are there any corrections, additions, or deletions to this set of minutes? Seeing none, the question is, shall the minutes be approved? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it, and those minutes are approved. This brings us to the next item, which is the Mayor's Report. One quick item. The Cook County Treasurer's Office of Maria Pappas sent out an email reminder just sharing for property owners that the first installment for the property tax bill will be due on April 3rd of 2023. And typically, they're due on March 1st, but as a result of last year's being pushed out, it is now April 3rd of 2023, and we can expect to see bills arriving to our addresses by March, or you can go online and pay them as well. Are there any ward reports this evening? Alderman Suneika.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I had several residents reach out regarding the increased stormwater from the past couple of storms over the past couple of days. And we did have a couple of residents that reached out and were able to talk with Public Works, so thank you very much, Public Works, for reaching out with those residents. As a reminder, if there is standing water in your backyard, it's city policy to allow 48 hours for that standing water to dissipate and for the systems to, for those systems to catch up. However, if your home is in danger of flooding, you don't have to necessarily wait for business hours. You can always call the non-emergency police number, and we'll make sure that we have someone out there who can help. That's, that's all for my ward report today. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Suneika. Alderman Basassi.
Yeah, I just want to, I've talked with some of the residents already. I'll get to the rest of the houses. But I've been hearing that several residents are seeing issues with their lawns after the water sewer replacements, where the, where the ground level has sunken down two to three inches between the sidewalk and the, and the area that was worked on. I'm just asking residents if they, if that's happening in their, in their yard, please don't hesitate to contact me at ward5@cityrm.org. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Basassi. Are there any other ward reports from the council? Okay, seeing no further ward reports, this will bring us to opening the floor to the public for 20 minutes because we do have two signatures on the sign-in sheet. However, before proceeding, I'm just going to read a couple of the housekeeping rules. So per the rules of procedures, the public is to address the City Council, and the fact that no member of the City Council responds does not mean that the City Council or any member thereof agrees or disagrees with the comment being made. In order to attain this objective, the following rules of conduct are hereby established. Any person who seeks to address the City Council at this time for public comments shall be permitted to speak only upon recognition of the presiding officer, and such, the person shall adhere to the following provisions. Each person addressing the City Council shall state their name for the record. Each person shall be granted no more than five minutes of the allotted 20 minutes in order to address the City Council. Questions and/or commentary shall be limited to city business. Comments supporting or opposing a nominated person's candidacy for elective office shall be considered out of order. Commentary shall be directed to the presiding officer unless the presiding officer permits an individual to address the City Council, its members, or city officers present. Discussion shall take place in a professional, professional manner which displays mutual respect, and of course, profanity shall not be used and will not be tolerated in any form or manner. With this, we have the first name on the sign-in sheet is Scott Boucher? Boucher? Scott?
Boucher.
Boucher.
Thank you for letting me come and, and talk. Just had a couple, just one quick comment. You all know, of course, about what happened at Rolling Meadows High School last Friday. Twenty-one kids suspended, six arrested, and a number injured from that, from that bike parking lot. I live in Waverly Park. As a matter of fact, I live right by the exit, from the back exits of the school. I bet you don't know how many squad cars we saw that afternoon. Negative. I didn't see any. Now again, we're right at the back exit of the school. Yesterday morning, they had a credible threat of a shooter. School didn't know what they were doing. Finally, they let everybody home. I did see one officer later in the day. He was trying to corral a Waverly, uh, golf cart that was in the neighborhood. Otherwise, we didn't see any police presence whatsoever. I'm worried that in two weeks, a good chunk of those 21 kids that are suspended are going to be back in school. There's an election coming up. They are not going to suspend, they're not going to expel 21 minority students a week before the election. They will be back in school. They will be coming back out. What's to prevent one of those many people parked at that exit from doing something? We worry about ourselves, we worry about the kids that are around there, and I just don't see any action.
And haven't seen any action by the police to, to take care of that. You know, I think I know the reason why that is, because it's the same reason it's been for 30 years. Shift change. Whenever there's a problem there, we, that's all we ever hear is shift change. I'd like to hope that maybe this time we can see something a little better. Thank you.
Thank you. The second name on the sign-in sheet is Mohammed Ahmed.
Thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak here. I actually come here from New York, coming in back to Chicago, though I was born here. I am considering to open up a vape shop here now. I just found out recently that the city of Rolling Meadows has thought about, or in the last meeting said that they were about to cap it to the, cap the license off at 6:00. I have been in talks, like, it took me a while to get in to reach back here, but it, I haven't yet missed the opportunity. I want the city to give it a small bit of consideration, because that's not the only business that I am intending to get into. Me, by profession, I'm an automotive industry specialist. I've served as a consultant to Toyota. I basically went to school at UTI, Diagnosis Master Tech. I was just talking to the gentleman here, too, that I could be really good use for the city, too. I can beat all the prices for any maintenance that you guys have done for the city, like, I will trust me on that. I will beat the service, the quality of the service, but that's not the primary thing. Now, that is a hard business to set up, the automotive launch you started up. An easier would be the vape. Now, we do have another location, so I was intending to move that here now. I just got shocked by the high school incident right there. I have kids that go to school right now in the Skokie District, which is a really good zone. I was intending to bring them in, you know, move into this whole area altogether, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna think about that one more time before, but I didn't know that, that this incident happened, a shooting, 21 people, that, that's shocking. Or, no, shooting? No, not shooting, okay, fight, fight. I have daughters, you know, I have girls, you know, like, they're in high school. It's scary, but it's probably not that bad. I'm gonna look into the schools, but that wasn't the concern. That's just a new concern that all of a sudden popped up from the person that spoke before me and that, you know, shook me off a little bit. I would want the city to consider, instead of capping it off at 6:00, I've been in talks with Elizabeth since October, like, I guess that's long before the cap and, you know, everything has been going on. Finally, since I made it in, if they would consider, because there is this one location, which I just found out also, which is very hard to fulfill, the location, you know, it's been empty on Central Road. I've just, I just, I was just there about half an hour ago, and I'm about to sign up the lease. If the city would honor that, I'm also intending not only the vape and smoke shop, because it's easy, I'm gonna put up a Starbucks kiosk on it, too. It's like a ready-made thing that anybody that needs that, they could stop by, have their favorite coffee in the morning, give you good hours, you know, best service that you can, you know, think of from 6:00 AM to like, even if you want it late at night, like, if the city would really consider this as, you know, like, and that would just be a beginning for the first step that I lay in the door. And then after this, like, I am looking, like, I just got guided towards the person that I have to talk to for an automotive setup, too. That would be the, that would be my primary setup, that I, I will really focus on most of it myself. But this would be a part that would pay most of the bills for, like, the beginning. This is an easier setup to start. That's why I've assumed that the city knows that they got inquiry after inquiry after inquiry, people inquiring after inquiring about this, and the city is considering to put a cap on it. What is there to be afraid of? It's the best thing that has happened in the world these days. I quit smoking because of vape. I'm a firsthand person that can tell you, I smoked 25 years of my life cigarettes, which were really bad, and I got into vape. That made me forget about cigarettes. Now, I'm gonna quit vaping as well, somewhere down the line, because of my kids getting older and all of that, but that, it, it is an alternate, and I don't see any harm to that type of a business. I mean, there's not that many locations, but the location that I'm considering within a geographical mile, I don't see another location anywhere close. There's a lot of residences, a lot of people, every day, you know, it's in a strip mall where there's a Subway, there's another food place, there's this cleaner, I mean, people drive by it. It would be really accessible for a lot of people. I mean, it would make a lot of people's life easy, and then you get to enjoy your coffee, too. A bunch of other things, too, maybe cell phone accessories, like, just those things, everyday things, these are all going to be part of that setup that I want, like, however the city can, you know, my request is just consider the cap from 6:00 to 7:00. 6:00 is the devil's number, anyway.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. And that'll do it for the names on the sign-in sheet. So this concludes our segment for opening the floor to the public, and this will bring us to items pending, and we'll begin with line item A, which is ordinance number 23-04, and this was tabled at the November 22nd, 2022 City Council meeting. It's to amend the alcohol liquor code to approve a class G A liquor license for video gaming at Anna's Red Apple LLC, doing business as Anna's Red Apple at 2121 Plum Grove Road. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
Some of them.
Thank you, Alderman Suneika. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alderman O'Brien for the second. Is there any discussion on this item? Alderman Budmats.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I've stood in the way of this application for quite a while. The reasons are little to do, actually, with, with this particular location. I don't have a problem with the Red Apple, which is a real restaurant, having a gaming accessory license. The problem is, is that its sister organization has been less than forthright and has been operating a gaming cafe many times without food available. I did a little informal survey today. I went to several of our gaming cafes, and I was told by one of them that if I wanted fresh food, I should go next door to the taco stand where there was food available that was fresh. I was given the menu for a pizza place at a different one of our gaming cafes, because they said, we really don't have fresh food here, even though their menu item is pizza. So they gave me the Papa Savarrio's across the street's menu. So the Red Apple deserves to have their license, but our program is broken. It is broken, and it needs to be fixed. I'm tired of, of walking into places, finding out that all they are is a front for gambling, and they have the bare minimum of food, if anything, available in order to satiate the chance that they might get an inspection. It's a joke, and so I won't stand in the way of this applicant, but I, I would really prefer that he got Isabella's license, that just got transferred over, because he deserves it, and they don't. That's the end of my comment.
Thank you, Alderman Budmats. I agree with a significant portion of, of the statements you made. As a result of the issues that we have with our video gaming cafes, Manager Sabo and I have called a meeting for all the video game terminal operators that host at their video game cafes to discuss these issues and the reinforcement in the position the city stands or takes on the violations. We hope to see significant corrective action as a result of this. I have made no bones about it, that I, as the liquor commissioner, I am willing to impose the strictest penalties possible that the council has set forth, and I believe the council's done a reasonable job in establishing the penalties as an opportunity for deterrence. But if deterrence doesn't work, then revocation has to happen, and when enough of these licenses become revoked, then it'll be up to the council to come back and make a determination whether the program is viable or if we have to do something else as a result of that. So I do agree with you, Alderman Budmats. Is there any other discussion on this? Alderman Basassi.
I also wholeheartedly agree with Alderman Budmats, and in fact, I'm not gonna go in the way of, of Red Apple, but I do have exactly the same concerns, and I know it's not 100% germane to, to the, to the, what we're approving right here, or what we're talking about right now, but I have no inclination, as long as I'm on this council, to ever, ever, ever approve a gaming cafe in the city, and we need to eliminate the gaming cafes in the city. Period. That's it.
Thank you, Alderman Basassi. Is there any other discussion on this item? Okay, so seeing no further discussion on this, then the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reyes.
Yes.
Suneika.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
Basassi.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is adopted. This brings us to line item B. It's ordinance number 23-05. That's to amend the alcoholic liquor code to increase the number of licenses permitted under the class A2 liquor license for Phoenix Flame at 3240 Kirchhoff Road. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
Some of them.
Thank you, Alderman Suneika. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alderman O'Brien for the second. Is there any discussion on this item? Okay, seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Suneika.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
Basassi.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is adopted. The next item on the agenda are the consent ordinances in for first reading. This consists of two items. However, I'm pulling item D, and staff has requested that be pulled as well, and since I'm pulling one of two, we'll just take these consecutively. So that begins with line item C, which is ordinance number 23-00 at this time, to approve the elimination of cash bonds in connection with the building permits and zoning applications. Is there a motion to consider this ordinance for first reading?
Some of them.
Thank you, Alderman Suneika. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alderman McHale for the second. Is there any discussion on this item? Alderman Budmats.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So if you recall, a few months ago, we had a situation where a, a person had subdivided some land, and, and at that point, the, had not completed the drainage properly, and the only way that we were able to accomplish the work was the use of the, the remaining cash bond that, that was in our account, because the person didn't, he wanted to have the money refunded to him, but didn't feel that it was incumbent upon him to do the work that was necessary to finish it. So I, I completely and wholeheartedly understand that it's probably an accounting nightmare to try to keep track of every $50, $100, $150 cash bond amount that the city is required to keep under its current code, but I would suggest that we amend this ordinance to be that up to $1,000 in cash bonds will be waived, or the keeping thereof will be waived, and when it's over $1,000, that it's incumbent upon us to keep it until such time as the project is properly closed out, so that we have the funds available, should it be necessary to complete whatever problem it is that needs to be solved, and that we're not taking money from the citizens to finish a project, and then going, in theory, after a developer who may not even exist any longer. So I would suggest that we only waive the collection of cash bonds for an amount less than $1,000.
Seconded.
Thank you for that, but to be clear, for this, this is for subdivision bonds exclusively and not the building permits, not for residential permits?
I understand, but it, in the reading of it, it also, it's, it mentioned for zoning as well, which there were, there are zoning changes when we subdivide, so I guess if we're doing a large project and it's $1,000 or more in cash, I don't see a problem with hanging onto $1,000 in cash. It's gonna, it's, I'm assuming it's gonna eliminate the vast majority of the number of bonds that we have to hold on to, which is the purpose behind this, is what I'm guessing.
Yeah, and I agree with you that the city should maintain some sort of leverage through this financial deposit. Is, is $1,000 from maybe the planning or building economic development, Rolling Meadows, Community Development Department, is this a feasible number, $1,000, is that a feasible benchmark number based on what you encounter, or should we consider something different?
I'm gonna ask Assistant City Manager Glenn Cole to opine on that.
Yes, so Alderman, I think what you described is exactly how this ordinance is intended to work. So first, I'm not familiar with that exact situation, but when we take bonds, cash deposits, so on, in connection with subdivisions, in connection with site improvements, that, that's a separate requirement of the code. So if that application came in today, I want to subdivide a lot, I need to make grading improvements. Nothing you're considering tonight would change the amount of money that's taken or how long it's held. This is really particular to building permits. And our goal here in recommending this ordinance is exactly as you described, to take a larger amount of money from a smaller number of permits to be able to guarantee that the work gets done. And so this, the way the ordinance is set up is it gives us a bit more flexibility in when we ask for that $1,000 or $5,000, as the case may be, just for those larger projects or projects that involve a public right of way, where there's a higher chance that we might have damage to public property, or where we may, you know, have to finish work in the public right of way.
Okay, so it's a reasonable benchmark, financial amount, that, that will, that will enable the city to still have the leverage necessary, but not encumber smaller developers in any capacity, that $1,000 limit that Alderman Budmats is proposing?
That is the, the goal, yes.
Okay, then I'll take Alderman Suneika's second on, on that amendment. Is there any discussion on the amendment? Okay, if there's no discussion on the amendment, we'll put it to roll call vote with the clerk.
McHale.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
Basassi.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Suneika.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, we'll have the amendment included for the up to $1,000 amount, and then we'll bring this, this back for the first reading here, the ordinance to approve the elimination of cash bonds in connection with building and zoning permits and applications, but with an up to $1,000 amount in there. Any discussion on this as amended now? Okay, seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
Basassi.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Suneika.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, the ordinance will be moved forward as amended to second reading. All right, this next item on the agenda is line item D. After speaking with the business and then with staff about the situation, which I can get into more in discussion, we're now asking for a waiver of the first reading in this ordinance, so that it can be approved immediately and not stifle operations. And so this ordinance is number 23-00, to amend ordinance number 22-21, to provide extended time for compliance with zoning approval conditions and establish additional conditions regarding the special use in Parking Variation Association with the indoor soccer field located at 3660 Edison Place in the city of Rolling Meadows. Is there any discussion on waiving the first reading? I'm sorry, yeah, I forgot the motion. Sorry, guys, is there a motion?
Some of them.
To waive the first reading? Thank you. So I got Alderman Beniziano and Alderman Basassi for the first and second. I'll get you next time, Alderman O'Brien. Is there any discussion about waiving this first reading? Okay, then if not, we'll have the clerk call the roll.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
Basassi.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Suneika.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
Seven in favor and none opposed, waive the first reading, and now we'll read this again. Amend the ordinance 22-21, to provide extended time for compliance with zoning approval conditions and establish additional conditions regarding the special use in Parking Variation Association with the indoor soccer field located at 3660 Edison Place, the city of Rolling Meadows. Is there a motion now to approve this ordinance? So moved. Thank you, Alderman O'Brien.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Beniziano for the second. Is there any discussion on this item? Alderman Budmats.
I just wanted to be 100% sure, the applicant knows that it's gonna be really done, done by July the 1st, right?
Yes, so for the backstory, in case you're not familiar, they were under construction, they finished their inside build-out, they had the inspections performed, everything passed for occupancy minus the exterior finishings, landscaping, grinding down the top layer of asphalt, repaving, adding the paint stripes, and as a result of the weather and asphalt companies not being open at this time, staff has decided to separate the permit into two phases and enable a temporary certificate of occupancy in order for them to utilize their business as opposed to them renting. that they built is a really nice, protected environment, soft and adequate, more so than a basketball facility. And I think to be good stewards of businesses in this community, I think we should enable that, and as a result, staff had come up with the decision or the idea of separating this construction into two phases, which enables them to do that. So, as a result of that, with this now waiving a first reading and moving on to adopting the ordinance, I'm gonna ask that the clerk, if you have more to say. Oh, my goodness, go ahead.
I didn't get to.
All right.
So, I really implore community development to really take a look and take this as a prime example that when we have these big projects, to take a look at these phases and look at this. When we got this, we should've known that them telling us that we have this all-in-one big project and they're gonna have the landscaping and the parking lot done in February is not realistic. So, I think we need to be good stewards of businesses and realize that and kind of lead our businesses to decide, like, they need to do these in two phases so that we're not having to come back, you know, and waive first readings and those kind of things. You know, that's something that we need to be a little bit more proactive about for our, our new development.
Thank you, Alderman Beniziano. It's a good point that we can help advise these builders, these tenants in building when they're not necessarily the subject matter experts there. I know staff has done a good job with the Aloft Hotel in separating it into multiple phases so that the Aloft could have occupancy while they still had exterior finishing to do, but that is maybe a good practice for, for staff to look into and make the recommendation to the council upfront when it comes to these special requests and variances that we might have to issue and bifurcate into one, two, or three phases if there isn't any legal liabilities to that, in the sense that we put out some sort of indemnification paperwork. Manager Savo?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And to that point, based on staff's observations of council feedback, we are examining our policy with respect to the way that we have done these kind of permits where we require the site plan work to be completed in order to get full occupancy, and so it's our plan to bring this conversation back to the city council for a broader discussion of how we approach these types of developments moving forward so that we can align the practice that we have, that we have moving forward with the policy direction from the city council.
Thank you.
Thanks, and I'm sorry I didn't see your hand before.
That's okay.
Any other discussion? Quick survey here. Okay, with no further discussion, then I'll ask for the clerk to call roll.
Beniziano.
Yes.
Besessi.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Suneika.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is adopted. This brings us to line item E, which is new business. It's a motion to approve payment of bills on warrant for February 28th, 2023. Is there a motion to approve the warrant?
Some of them.
Thank you, Alderman Reyes, and thank you, Alderman Suneika for the second. Is there any discussion regarding the bills on warrant? Okay, seeing none, then the question is, shall the warrant be approved? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Besessi.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Suneika.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, the warrant is approved. This brings us to the next item on the agenda, which are the consent resolutions, and this consists of 14 items. Those line items are F through S. Does any Alderman wish to remove an item or items from the consent agenda for resolutions? Alderman Budmats.
Item L, please.
Any other items? Let's hope we can get like a Wheel of Fortune type thing going. An L and an M. All right, with just one being pulled, item L, that leaves 14. So, seeing Alderman Budmats pulled one item, that leaves 13 items. So, the chair declares an order for one motion to consider these 13 resolutions in a single motion without debate. Is there such a motion?
Some of them.
Thank you, Alderman Suneika. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alderman O'Brien for the second. So, beginning with line item F, resolution number 23-R-19, is to approve the annual subscription for Cisco Meraki Licensing and Support. Line item G, resolution number 23-R-20, is to authorize the purchase of water meters and water meter parts for replacement, repairs, and new construction for fiscal year 2023 from Core &amp; Main in a not-to-exceed amount of $60,000. That's six, zero, comma, zero, zero, zero. Resolution number 23-R-21 is to award a three-year, sorry, my computer just had a pop-up, three-year contract for landscape services fiscal year 2023 through fiscal year 2025 with two annual renewal options to bury landscaping in the amount of $69,629 per season. Line item I, resolution number 23-R-22, is to authorize the purchase of a 2023 Roadhog Asphalt Mill Skid Steer Attachment from Atlas Bobcat in a not-to-exceed amount of $25,130. Line item J, resolution number 23-R-23, is to award a contract for 2023 street maintenance, crack sealing, and various city streets to Patriot Paving Maintenance in a not-to-exceed amount of $50,000. Line item K, resolution number 23-R-24, is to authorize a design engineering and construction supervision contract with RJN Group, Inc. for three sanitary sewer point repairs in accordance with the Metropolitan Water Reclamation District in an amount of $27,600. Line item M, resolution number 23-R-26, is to approve the purchase of one police patrol vehicle from Curry Motors in a not-to-exceed amount of $48,075. Line item N, resolution number 23-R-27, is to approve the purchase of a 2023 Ford F250 four-by-four pickup truck in replacement of T369, a 2008 Ford F250, from Curry Motors in a not-to-exceed amount of $61,490. Line item O, resolution number 23-R-28, is to approve the purchase of a 2023 Chevrolet Bolt EV in replacement of RM264/C432, which is a 2008 Ford Ranger, from Curry Motors in a not-to-exceed amount of $30,613.10. Line item P, resolution number 23-R-29, is to approve the purchase of a 2023 Ford Transit in replacement of RM112/T356, which is a 2004 Ford F250, from Curry Motors, good bless you, in a not-to-exceed amount of $64,418. Line item Q, resolution number 23-R-30, is to rescind resolution 22-R-100 and approve a debt collection service agreement between Municipal Collection Services LLC and the city of Rolling Meadows. And line item R, resolution number 23-R-31, is to approve a side letter agreement between the city of Rolling Meadows and the Rolling Meadows Professional Firefighters, IAFF Local 3075. And resolution number 23-R-32 is to approve and authorize the execution of city manager employment agreement with Rob Savo. The question is, shall the 13 resolutions be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reyes.
Yes.
Suneika.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
Besessi.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, the resolutions are adopted. This brings us back to line item L, resolution number 23-R-25, is to approve a contract for the purchase and installation of the Public Works Generator to BME Electric in a not-to-exceed amount of $266,240. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution? Thank you, Alderman Budmats. Thank you, Alderman O'Brien for the second. Alderman Budmats, you pulled this, so you're first up to bat here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, this was a discussion at the council of the whole, I think, October, November area, and at that time, we asked that there would be more bids available. There's a, Clark Deetz is the engineer for the project. If they don't know any other electricians besides this one electrical company to get bids from, then we need to get a different engineer to handle this project for us who does know other electricians. But I have a really difficult time. I'm not talking about the viability of the project. It's been kicked around for four years, five years that I've been on the council, if this is a necessary device or not. That's not the, why I'm pulling this. I'm pulling this because we're gonna spend a quarter of a million dollars and we have one bid total, and I'm not satisfied with getting one bid, especially when it's $66,000 lower than the last quote that the same company gave us, and I really don't understand why. Is it because they thought that if they were $66,000 lower, that we would just roll over and play dead? Maybe there's another $66,000 to be had off at this price. I really don't know. Maybe we're getting the best deal of my, of our lifetime and I'm making a mistake by saying this, but we need to have more than one bid when we spend a quarter of a million dollars. So, I'm gonna be voting no, and I want them to come back to us with more than one bid.
Thank you, Alderman Budmats. Is there any further discussion on this item? Alderman Suneika.
Yeah, can we have some, maybe some additional color from staff regarding the number of bids that were presented before the council?
Sure, thank you. So, we, as part of this process, we went back based off that discussion at the committee of the whole to go seek an actual public formal sealed bidding process. We did send it out. This contractor, BME Electric, is actually not the one who provided the main quote from Sourcewell. That was ARC 1. We asked ARC 1 to bid on this project and they did not submit anything, as well as the other contractor who's part of that committee of whole. They did not put in a quote. This was advertised in the newspaper. It followed all bidding procedures that are required by state law, and we had, we had one turnout. But as far as that goes, that's really the context behind it. We did send it to three different contractors and then posted it in the newspaper as per our state requirement.
Is that sufficient?
Yeah, that is sufficient. So, it sounds like this was a relatively transparent process that followed all of the, of the regular procedures. So, I suppose I would want to hear any additional input from, from council on Alderman Budmats' statement earlier.
I, I'll concur with Alderman Budmats in the sense that I, I don't know that this is necessarily a genuine baseline indicator for what we should be investing from a financial perspective. We have seen the numbers begin in one place and then a significant dip in what's presented today, and I think in order to justify to our residents the expense and knowing the scope of work and knowing the length of discussion, that we have a little bit greater transparency. And if we do at least get one other bid back, not that I'm only anticipating or accepting one other bid, but it'll give us a spectrum to evaluate as a result, and if they're in line with this price, then we know that this is the market rate and it's a project that has viability, and we can justify to our residents the expense. But at this point, we have one number to go off of, which is significantly different from the first number we'd received before, and I don't know that it, it helps any one of us have that dialogue with our residents as a result. Alderman O'Brien?
I was, I'm actually comfortable with that, with the initial staff information that was provided. I know just as Alderman Budmats, there's the four years I've been on council, this has been something that's come to our attention numerous times, and I see that as a need when something keeps coming back and coming back, and I've had no experience of not thinking staff was being judicious with the money. So, I'm in support of it. Just most recently, we had an ice storm earlier this week, is I couldn't imagine justifying to my residents, hey, we couldn't get Public Works out to clean up and keep the roads clears for police and fire if they would've lost power at Public Works. I view this as a first responder thing, and I don't have any hesitation with that, too. Then we did, we went through a clear bid process. We have no control over only one entity getting a bid back to us. So, if we go out again, there's not saying that we're gonna get three this time either. Is that also, I know grants are always based on selection. This could come down to costing us $66,000 if my math was correct, with our cost share with the Park District, as well as a 75% graph, or grant that was noted. So, I'm in full support of this, based on the transparency and walking through how it was done and seeing this as a need, since for four years, it's been asked for, it's been budgeted for, and I, I have an easier way to explain that to residents, that if something were to happen and we couldn't get critical vehicles out of Public Works, that, I think that's all that needs to be said from my perspective.
And I appreciate that. I think to your point about it being four years, in the four years that we've been discussing the, the need for this, it hasn't once impeded our ability, knock on wood, it doesn't, but knowing that what the generator's capacities are and what, what it operates does not obstruct their ability to get out to residents for service, and I think it's just a more fiduciary approach if we were to broadcast the need for more bids and just get greater transparency in the cost of this. Alderman Budmats, second bite.
I'd like to get a second bite, this have. In September, I got three electricians to my house to get a price for a whole-house generator. I didn't get the job done. It'll get done in the spring, but I was able to get three electricians to come out within a month. If, if you're gonna tell me that the city of Rolling Meadows can't get more than one electrician to come out and look at getting us a generator for a quarter of a million dollars, it, it's almost impossible for me to believe that. I, I have to believe that there are licensed electrical contractors in Rolling Meadows who would wanna get the job. So, the fact is that it's just in the newspaper. Maybe we need to do something better because, I don't know if you noticed, but circulation of newspapers is much more limited than it used to be. So, not everybody's getting one every more. So, I, I really would like to get a second price. I'm not fighting about the necessity of the job. I'm not fighting about any of that. All I wanna see is more than one price at a quarter of a million dollars for us to spend the money and say, somebody else to say, yeah, I would do it for $280, $250. I, I just wanna know that we're paying the right amount and that we're not getting hosed, because it's $66,000 difference than the last time in October that they told us what it was. Why did it go down $66,000? Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Besessi.
So, I would agree with Alderman Budmats, that, you know, it just seems strange. It's not like it's an odd job to be done, that only one company is willing to, to bid on it. So, as much as I really, really want this to go forward, I can't see that I would be voting for it right now. I was wondering if there was some way we could postpone and give staff longer to try and find more bids, because it seems strange to me.
Okay. I mean, we can always.
We're gonna draw the line at some point. I mean, it's been happening on and off for a long time.
Yeah, and we, we can get there after we finish the questions and maybe make the proposal for that. But Alderman O'Brien, second bite here.
Thank you, sir. I was just gonna, like, what are the ideas? We have to rely on our staff as subject matter experts? I, I don't know. Like, is it social media things? I don't, like, how many times do we go back out for these postings? It's not my expertise, so I'm not one to say that if we post it for a second, a third, or a fourth time, we're gonna get another two bids. So, I'm, I'm looking for my peers, like, what are some other ideas that we can help staff with to get an official bid process out when we've actually done everything that we need to do for an official bid?
Well, I think like in my daytime job, I do it until I've met the, the standards of my superiors, and the council's just asking for, at least a couple of the council members are asking for a greater degree of exercise to get more than one bid in, in order for the approval to take place, and I guess do it until that happens, is the short answer. Alderman McHale.
If we were to go ahead and do that and postpone this, how long would we need to do that for? Like, what is the time range that we're looking at?
Well, it's been four years so far, right? And I'm not trying to say kick it out another four years, but I think until you get more than one number back from one, one bidder, then that's the answer.
And how long was it, how long was it out for bid then? Like, how long did we?
Yeah, so the bidding process, we have to have it in the paper or noticed for 10 days. It would take us, most likely, we would just have to rebid the, the proposal again, reach out to other vendors in the area and submit it to them personally, and we would just go through the process again. It would be another month or two at the soonest that it would come back.
Thank you.
So, Alderman McHale, Attorney Wolf had just advised that we don't necessarily have to go through the bidding process again. Staff can seek proposals, and so they can directly call to get proposals on this, so that would circumvent the, the whole 10-day cycle, but if they opened up Rolodex.
So, this could come back on a next, like, the next agenda with three more proposals that we've reached out to a few people to see?
Ideally, yeah. I mean, hypothetically, if the staff had the bandwidth within the next couple of weeks, you know, next week or so, to make those phone calls and have the entity turn around with a proposal, that's as long as it would take is for those actions, the sequence of actions to occur.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Beniziano.
Thank you. So, I'm with Alderman O'Brien. I, I don't wanna continuously put this off any longer. I'm, I'm 100% on board with this. We did this, I think, as far as I'm concerned, yesterday. However, I agree, we need to be fiscally responsible, make sure that we have adequate amount of bids. So, I would like to propose that we postpone this until the last meeting in March. That'll give staff more than 10 days or two weeks to get substantial multiple vendors, we can't get any more bids, that suffices to me, that they did their due diligence. And I am more than happy to vote on it at that point. So I don't know what date that is in March, but, is it the 28th?
Yeah.
So my, my, my proposal is to postpone this till March 28th.
So is there a second for the proposal to postpone? Alderman Budmats seconds that. Is there any discussion on the postponing of this until March 28th?
I apologize, the third bite. Based on the contract wave in front of us, this bid is only valid until March the 10th. I don't know if that varies. Is that, am I reading that correctly? I think it says on page two of the proposal by their signature, bid validity date is through 3/10.
I believe that is the, the proposal on, on that specific bid. If we went back out or offered more proposals, then that timeline would be negated. We would have to go through a process, March 14th, to, I believe, reject this bid as part of that, because we did solicit it, and then we would go back out. I don't know if you want, is that's correct or not?
Yes, if you were going to go with an alternate proposal that's gained in this interim time period, you would have to reject the bid and, and then approve the proposal if you do get a lower amount.
And even though there is a timeline indicated here, if the vendor wants to pursue the job, I'm sure they'll make accommodations for that. And if not, maybe we get a better price anyway. Any other discussion on the postponing? Alderman Bassessi.
It's more of a question for, for Public Works. Do you think the 14th would be adequate time to make the phone calls that you would need to make?
I would personally prefer to give vendors, because if we wanted to get it on the 14th, we would have to have everything ready and submitted by next week, I believe. So we would need to give vendors enough time to actually adequately go through, because the documents are actually quite extensive as far as the plans are for the project.
Thank you.
So, yeah, that would be a rather quick turnaround.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments on?
I just want to make sure we get our direction correctly. So the process that we undertook was in accordance with our purchasing policy. So the, the process that we are seeking to take is what I would call more of an informal purchasing process, where we are no longer obtaining sealed bids, but instead seeking quotes, where we are working with different entities and seeking additional quotes for this project.
And I think Alderman Budmats, but not to put words in your mouth, but I think this process has failed us in the sense that we only got one proposal, and that one proposal is not a, a good enough financial indicator for, for some of us on the council. And so if that's the case to, to augment the process, then that's what I think we need to do.
Okay, so it'll, procedurally, then, the way that I'm conceptualizing this is that we're going to pursue options and reach out to companies and say, these are the specs, provide us your quotes. Functionally, the reason that we went through the formal bidding process is for the, for the removal of any sort of impart, to allow the process to be an impartial process where you're opening sealed bids, like we do with our road construction projects. With those types of processes, you have sometimes vendors who don't want to go through the formal bidding process because of the steps involved and what have you. So then, based on the direction tonight, if, if this motion is approved, then our direction, to make sure I'm summarizing correctly, is that we will pursue quotes from qualified vendors who can provide the, and meet the specifications that we set forth. However, we won't do it in a manner that is a sealed bidding process. We will seek those quotes and then bring back at a minimum three quotes for the council's consideration.
Correct. And to your point, we may have limited ourselves by those companies who don't want to go through that bureaucratic process of the sealed bid process. So Alderman Budmats, we're on postponing, so you get another bite here. This is a different subject.
And so the, this is a matter of public record. So anybody can look and see that there's already been a bid for $266,000. So I, I mean, it's like, I don't think that, I'm not expecting somebody to come in for 150, but, but at the same token, I, I think there's people who are going to say, $266,000? Heck, yeah, I, I'd love to do that. I can even do a little better than that. The point is, is that this is, this is an electric generator. We were already told that every other village has one. So it can't, it can't be that hard to get one if every other village except for us has one. I'm sure there's going to be an electrician who's going to want to install it. We just have to find one who's willing to give us a price.
Any other discussion on postponing this until the March 28th date? Okay, and if not, I'll have the clerk call roll for postponing this until March 28th.
Sanoyka.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
No.
Beniziano.
Yes.
Bassessi.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
With six in favor and one opposed, this item is postponed until March 28th. This brings us to other business and reports. I don't have any appointments, nor do I have any proclamations, and it looks like the city clerk does not have anything to report.
No, nothing.
Then that'll move us on to city staff reports, and we'll begin with the first item, which are the community items of interest. And for this, Manager Savo, I defer to you.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Be bold and get cold will be the rally cry on March 5th for Rolling Meadows Police Officers as they take the frigid plunge into Crystal Lake's main beach for this year's Polar Plunge Event on Sunday, March 5th, which runs from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. at Main Beach located at 300 Lake Shore Drive in Crystal Lake. Come on out to cheer them on. Your kind donation to this event will support the Illinois Special Olympics to enhance programming and events for these outstanding athletes. To donate and for more information, visit HTTPS for its, we'll post the link online because it is very long and no one's going to get this down. So check our Facebook pages, we will post that information. Are you ready to rock and roll in Meadows this year? The city is proud to present many acclaimed bands this summer, including Ashlyn Craft, Aura, Rosie and the Rivets, Rod Tough Curls, and the Bench Press, and many more. Stay up to date on city happenings and special events by visiting and following the city's Facebook page at facebook.com/cityofroilingmeadows. With spring just under, just under a month away, we are providing a friendly reminder that daylight savings time begins on Sunday, March 12th at 2:00 a.m. Mark your calendars and get ready to spring forward in just a few weeks. When changing your clocks, always remember to test your smoke and carbon monoxide alarms and replace any non-functioning batteries or expired alarms. Lastly, planning for this year's city's parade is now underway. The city is currently accepting applications from groups, businesses, and individuals that want to participate in the city's Fourth of July Parade, which will be held on Tuesday, July 4th at 11:30 a.m. along Meadow Drive. Applications to participate are due by June 23rd, and there is no fee. For more information, visit the city's website at cityrm.org. That's it for this evening.
Easy enough link for that.
That one is, that one is.
Let's keep this going with the March 14th city council draft agenda. Manager Savo.
Thank you, Mayor. The draft agenda is included in the council packet and will be posted in accordance with the Open Meetings Act prior to the meeting date. A few of the notable items include the second reading of the elimination of cash bonds as it was amended this evening. A placeholder was put on the agenda for the 3660 Edison. This is the soccer facility that'll be removed, given that first, a waiver of first reading was approved this evening. In addition, under resolutions, we do have a few different contractual approvals, including janitorial services, the purchase and installation of electric charging equipment for city hall parking lot, our annual fire hydrant painting, as well as the installation and continuation of the Kerch Off-Road walk lamps. Again, the draft agenda is included in the agenda packet and is subject to be updated prior to its formal posting and according with the Open Meetings Act. Thank you.
Thank you, Manager Savo. That completes our community items of interest, and it brings us to matters that are not on the agenda. Are there any matters that are not on this evening's agenda? Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just real quickly, before tonight's meeting, I wanted to thank Lori, CSEC, and the Veterans Committee had the chance to swing by the Veterans Committee Canines for Vets program over at the community center. Just in the short time I was able to attend before coming over here, it's incredible the value that that program brings to veterans. They had, on the time I was there, they had two veterans speak to the benefit. So just want to thank the Veterans Committee for that. And then any additional information, if you have a friend, family with PTSD or interested in making a donation, they run strictly on donations, please visit Canines for Vets. But it was a great program that Lori and the Vets Foundation put on.
Thank you, Alderman Brian. Alderman Beniziano.
Thank you. So I, I did get several phone calls from people in, or residents in my ward, and I believe some outside of my ward, in regards to some of the happenings at Rolling Meadows High School. And so it's not my position to speak as to what happened or didn't happen. I think a lot of us council members do have our own children that go to the high school. But I do want to kind of put Chief Nowacki on the spot for a minute to, to just reemphasize to parents and to students, you know, to report what you see, what you hear. I know there's a Facebook page out there. I know from my own daughter, you know, that there is a Facebook page that they know about things that are going to happen well before they happen. So I'll let Chief kind of respond a little bit. I know, I know I got a lot of phone calls, I'm sure, as a lot of us did, in regards to it.
Thank you, Alderman. Yeah, regarding the incidents that happened on Friday, we are, we did make arrest, we did, they are juveniles, so we did petition those individuals. We still are working on additional charges. All the individuals that were involved have been identified. I know there was some comments made about additional police presence. There was definitely additional police presence. I won't go into detail, obviously, I don't want to jeopardize our, you know, our plan and our security over there. But like I said, I even personally was in the area, I actually was on Oak, was on Linden. So, but like I said, I won't go into the specifics. But if you, if any of your children do or are aware of any type of threat, please dial 911, call the school, call myself, excuse me. But yeah, no, we do take those threats very seriously. We're still working on a nondescript threat. I did have detectives yesterday working all day on that. That has not panned out, but we're still, like I said, investigating that. And like I said, the main thing is if you see something, let us know. I hope that answered your question, Alderman?
Thank you, hopefully. I hope that helps the residents a little bit, feel a little better.
Thank you, Alderman Beniziano. And Chief, I want to say thank you too. Sometimes the, the best safeguards are the ones you don't see.
Exactly.
And your actions and the resources that were brought there were done in a manner that controlled the situation, but didn't create any additional undue alarm to the community outside of there as a result of the way it was handled. So thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And so we still do have increased police presence there, not only in the school, but around that area.